To call to order the Douglas zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, May 8th, at 7:05 PM. The first agenda item is a discussion with North Brown LLC, North Village update.
If you have the conversation.
We'll let you argue within the fee when he walks in, and how's that?
I was with Lincoln. Quick update, we're finishing up the cistern. We sold two affordables since the last meeting that we had mentioned.
Are those the ones that were on standby?
Right. So we have five affordable sold. We have three that are under agreement, two in Phase Two, the remaining two in Phase, I'm sorry, two and the remaining two in Phase One, and then one, the eighth one, is in Phase Two. So the remaining two should be closed within the next couple of months, I would think. They've been approved by DHCE, we have signed agreements.
Just, you know, just because you started advertising heavily, is that what absolutely pushed it through, or did something else change?
I don't think so. You know, it helped. I don't have any feedback that that's what drove people, I mean, as many people came from MLS, I guess, and people looking for, you know, becoming aware that affordables are available.
Yeah.
And anyway, it's, yeah, the activity on the affordables has been good. And I reviewed with Jay the amendment to the con permit, and we've agreed on language, I think, I don't know if you have copies of it. So I think that's it.
You said it was finishing up on the cistern, what remains to be done?
Piping, it needs to be installed. The drive is gravelled, I think the, where do you call this?
Allards.
Allards are there. So this is the piping, we were waiting for STAMTEC to find approval of all the specs. They require spec sheets on all of the components, and we just got some of those today. So as soon as that's, then the pipe's available. I hope that that will be done in the next week or two.
I'm sorry, is that?
I went to ES, I think it's.
Looks like it says just amendment to the con permit.
Yeah, maybe there's on the backside of it, you know, at a single page. That's the one I sent you.
Well, I.
The one you could have.
I included Jay's.
Dan, I have a question.
Okay, then, I mean, I assume it's the same.
Yeah.
Be good to review that.
I wouldn't.
Just for the. Plus lawyers sometimes.
Just out of curiosity, we're starting in the Phase Two, would we stand without paving requirements? Have we started to find a code of raising?
I haven't done the binder yet, that'll be shortly, we're gonna do the binder, I think, we'll talk to Bill, we're gonna do the binder and also pave the driveway for the cistern at the same time.
That makes sense, instead of paving.
No, I'm just curious, because I know that the fire chief had let that slide on the first floor, buildings, I don't want to be, figure it'd be proactive, instead of waiting until you're looking for more buildings than we get across.
So for Phase Two, the way that they're working it is, they're gonna pave half of Phase Two, work on the housing, and then when they go into the next phase, I think that's when they'll pave the next phase.
Yeah, we're gonna do it.
Not even next phase, but let's call it Two A and Two B.
Yeah.
Yep.
About when we get the link permit.
Yeah, I just, we hadn't talked about it in a while, I just don't remember what I was saying about that.
I did see an email too, that Bill was looking for a schedule, did you get that?
I got a schedule, I thought I gave it to Maria to put in your packets.
Oh, okay, yeah. Let's get it in the packet, okay.
I don't see it in there.
Does that, and scheduling, could it be the stuff that you're looking for in the past, or when they convey the property, the page?
No, no, primarily I look for the schedule, so I could coordinate with our consultant, who's doing the onsite inspections. So, you know, I'm trying, I was actually gearing up to have them go out, just to do a pre-construction inspection, but we weren't quite there.
Are you getting that other information, the booking page and all that, on the grant?
Yeah, no, I think the.
The board had requested that, when they do make a sale, that I'm provided with a
copy of the booking page, so just for my tracking purposes, and that needs to be made clear. And that was actually gonna be something, I was gonna say, perhaps we should insert that in the amendment, just to make sure that it happens.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Has it been happening, or is it?
No, that's why I'm saying it.
Okay, so, it's kinda late to do that, or no?
Well, the, looking through this amendment that he has, is, they talk about that plan right there, number one on the decision, the partial as-built. Is that the plan that you just got today?
No, the one we gave him today was the revised building and grading plan. When we, Billy requested on that revised building and grading plan, and that shows the proposed buildings, it doesn't show the as-built. He had requested that the difference between the distances between buildings be a little clearer. They were on there, the old distances were in light ink, and the new distances were in dark, so it was, you know, possible to get them up, but, so we redid it with blue and red ink, and then also provided a chart showing where there was any difference. And that's all on that.
So we're satisfied with that?
So just to give you the background, about a month and a half ago, we had a meeting, Mark, myself, the applicant, and this was something that, because the building size changed, we wanted to make sure that the setback, the integrity of the setbacks between the buildings was preserved, to the extent possible, particularly on the corners, when you're taking a corner within the project, the buildings may have an opportunity to be a little closer than was originally intended. So the concern was, well, let's get this plan out now, so that Mark has something to work off of when he gets his as-built plans, we don't have building setbacks here, we're working off of the setbacks between buildings. So that was the purpose of this plan, was to get that commitment, so that, you know, we're all working on the same issue, music, and, you know, we're not seeing things move erroneously. So, we met about six weeks ago, had this plan, we did come up with those comments about some of these dimensions being presented in a more clear manner, and identifying where we weren't maintaining what was originally approved for setbacks between buildings. So I haven't had a chance to look at the new plan that was submitted.
So this gets back to my original question, so this hasn't been satisfied, as we get on this, number one, because it hasn't been reviewed?
I have not reviewed the current sub bill.
Chairman, if I could, I put it to Bill, so this document isn't the amended, the amendment to the amended MOU that was referenced?
No, the amendment to the amended MOU primarily revolved around the cistern issue and the lack of a water boost pump station. That was dealt with through the Board of Selectmen, and was pretty much ratified with this board. There were some peripheral changes that this amendment to the con permit addresses, and it also references the amendment, the amended MOU.
And this is what's agreed upon, correct? There's no doubt about it?
Well, again, I want an opportunity to review that drawing, to make sure that there's nothing surprising in it. And the other thing I wanted you to consider was having a condition in there that references, the applicant shall provide the recorded book and page for any sales that occur. And that's important, because the measurement of the progress is based upon units sold. So if I don't know, it makes it cumbersome.
I mean, we have been providing the updated chart, and it shows closing dates, so it's readily available on the registry, you know, at the website, registry of these websites, so anybody can access it.
But that's what we had talked about quite a while ago, six, three months ago, anyways. Well, whatever, I can figure out which meeting it was. The point was, is it's easy, you're already doing it, so you already know what it is. If you just give him the information, he's not taking his time to try to research through the registry of these, that's the only point that is, just to help him with his tracking on the charts.
Set it down.
Ultimately, it's, well, not only that, it's gonna help him expedite his project, because we're not, he doesn't have time to look today, he's gonna look tomorrow.
So if we required that to be submitted within 72 hours of closing?
Shouldn't be that difficult.
Yeah, it's available right after it's recorded, so, okay. And that would cover, if there was a Friday closing, it's a few days, three days, so. Is the board okay with that?
Except that there's a holiday, why don't we make it a week?
Whatever the board wants to do.
I mean, I don't want it to be a situation where it's to their detriment, you know.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, that's the whole purpose of bringing it up, is not.
I mean, I don't mind having it a week, I don't mind if they put it a month in there, it's just what I'm gonna be measuring.
Seven days works, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully they have a new system where you can actually scan it from your office, and then they can scan with the computer, so that takes a little bit of time, you don't necessarily get the number right off. At least that's my experience.
It's probably a day or so.
Okay, so we'll get that language inserted, and then seven days of closing?
Sure.
Review the plan in the meantime?
Yeah.
Is there anything else that you'd like to?
No.
Bill?
No.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wanna add that language, Bill, and then we can?
I'll have Jay draft it, I'll tell him what the intent is.
Okay, fair enough. And Bill wanted a few minutes with the board?
In your packets, there's a memo, actually, it's not addressed to the ZBA, but it's intended for the ZBA. There was a little bit of a snafu at town meeting, we did have, under the special town meeting, Article Two, which transferred some monies around from different boards and committees' expenses. One of those boards and committees was the zoning Board of Appeals, and we transferred $1,500 from your expense account into the community development expense account, for the purpose of combining funds from a variety of different sources to get a full land-size pop your scanner water.
Is this cool thing right here?
That's that.
Sorry, I apologize.
That is correct.
It's a black and white picture, it's much better.
So, it's done, I did, my intent was to solicit input from boards and committees prior to town meeting, but the timing didn't allow it. This was something that was required by the finance director, that we get this on town meeting. My original intention was just to solicit expense vouchers from different boards when the invoice came in, and that's not the way the finance director wanted to work it, so this is primarily for your information. And that's for this fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
Is it as big as it looks, the size of a piano?
It's pretty big.
He's putting it in his office.
We used to have one, it was 20 years old, it failed, which is why we needed a new one.
So they have no issue with it?
How long's it gonna take you to read the directions for this little second?
Maria's gonna, she'll update me.
Oh, Maria, you're gonna do that, good for you.
It's my scam.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, thanks for noticing. That was fun.
Really?
Yeah.
Good job, you guys.
Thank you.
Oh, there's another copy of that, we got?
The packet. Okay, the next agenda item is case number 2019-03, public hearing for Dan Dudley, 160 Wall Street. The application was seven, sorry, 417, 2019. The application was published in the Oyster Telegram and Gazette, also posted at the town hall, and read as follows. The town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 7:15 PM on Wednesday, May 8th, 2019, in the Douglas Municipal Center Community Meeting Room. 29 Depot Street, Douglas, asks to hear the following application. Dan Dudley is requesting a variance in a rural agricultural RA zone district pursuant to the Douglas zoning bylaws for a rear yard setback and a side yard setback for two sheds. The bylaw requires a rear yard setback of 25 feet and a side yard setback of 25 feet. The applicant proposes a rear yard setback of four feet in connection with a shed located to the northwest, shed number one on the plan, and a rear yard setback of two feet in connection with shed located to the southwest, shed number two on the plan. The applicant proposes side yard setbacks of five feet on each side of shed number one. The property is located at 160 Wall Street, assesses map 158, parcel 19. A copy of the application may be viewed at the community development department during regular business hours. Any person interested in wishing, interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated. So, Maria, did we get all the certified mailings?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and the four of us will be voting on this, it'll be Mr. Holland, myself, Mrs. Holmes, and Mr. Fitzpatrick. Okay, the applicant, permission?
Before we start. My math is right, there's only four people here.
Right. Correct. We need, you need four votes.
Correct.
You wanna?
I risk, I think, more importantly, since this was filed, there's been further discussions between the neighbors, and there's a slight alteration to the proposal, which is going to increase the nonconformity. So, I mean, I'm fine with it, but, you know, if you wanna re-advertise to show the additional nonconformity, we should probably do that before we proceed with the public hearing, so we don't have any problems in that regard.
That should be advertised properly, I agree.
So, and I can tell you what the change is, if you have the little sketch. Well, I'll just hand out the revised one.
This right here?
Yeah, just show you the difference.
That's the revised one?
Yeah.
Thank you.
As I say, the neighbors have had, you know, discussions, and so, we had originally proposed a five-foot side lot setback on shed number one, and the neighbors would like to see that reduced to four feet, so that, that changes the total width to 20 feet from 22 feet. You'll see that it's marked on there, so that increases the nonconformity by one foot on either side of the shed. You see where we're going with that?
I'm not gonna talk about the case, since the case isn't.
Yeah, right, I guess the best bet would be just.
I mean, I've got questions.
Have you, I guess, refiled?
Yep.
Well, we can just re-advertise, can't we?
The document that you're submitting here says one thing, and you're telling us it's not supposed to refiling, right?
I would say it's closer than what was advertised, closer than what was filed in the application. So I would say it would require a new application and new advertising.
Yep. That's good.
All right. So do you wanna withdraw this application?
That's the board's decision, that's what we'll do, we'll refile it.
Well, there's a change, and the change is.
I don't think it'd be the board's decision, I think the request would come from the applicant on the withdrawal, which is pursued early.
Yeah, I mean, it's a substantive enough change that impacts the bylaw.
Then we would request that we be allowed to withdraw without prejudice?
Okay, the applicant has a request?
I'm, we accept the request for withdrawal, without prejudice.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Holmes, seconded by Mrs. Holmes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, you want to come to the June meeting?
Maria, when does this, when does a request have to be filed by, do you have a date from Mr. Attorney Lang?
Our next meeting is the 12th.
Yep. So, it's how many, how many days, weeks before?
June 12th, the deadline is May 22nd.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a file number on this. Yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
Give it to the teacher.
Okay, Bill?
Well, thanks for coming to let us know the sad news. Say, "Love you."
Before yesterday, I would like to know, sir.
Really? Really.
All right, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, we have minutes of March 13th.
Okay.
Good night, guys.
I wouldn't issue it until he solves this, but I went out for a site visit, I told you. Technically, I'd have to kick it to you guys, anyway.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Holland, to approve the minutes of March 18th, as March 13th has written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Graham didn't hear me last time. See, you didn't hear me again.
You're taking the night off for what?
For me?
Yeah.
I already wrote it.
Oh, okay.
I did too.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of April 10th, 2019, as written.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Holland, to approve the minutes of April 10th, 2019, as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Red, Mike.
Okay, one last item. Mr. Holland and Mrs. Holland are for reappointment.
Mr. and Mrs. Holland?
Yeah. And Mr. Bombara said that he's interested in being reappointed, Mr. Holland said he was, and Mrs. Holland said she was not interested in being reappointed.
She's been having to, hasn't had any fun with this thing.
So, the Board of Selectmen, Suzanne, sent me an email, would like the board's recommendation.
I recommend Sean for a life membership.
Then I could make decisions, all the decisions I could make.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Bombara?
I'm, I'm sorry, I move that we recommend Mr. Bombara.
I'll second that.
With also lifetime powers, if that's possible.
All right, all in favor of the appointment of Mr. Bombara?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and Mrs. Holland told me by phone about 5:00 PM tonight, that she was not interested, there's too many family commitments.
Stuff going on.
So, we have.
With regrets. Allow her to make her decision.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, can I bring up on the issue, please, in that 48-hour period? And this is, maybe today is, because there's not enough people here, I don't know, maybe it's not really the time to raise it.
To flush it out.
I'm just concerned about third parties communicating with the board through the internet, through email. I don't know, it seems to me that one could very easily end up violating the open meeting law, because we're getting information through the email from outsiders, without it being made part of the record, outsiders from outsiders of the board.
Yeah.
And I think that at the very least, we should entertain a policy, that if we receive any emails from outside parties, that they be read into the record, or become somehow put into the record, sort of purge that possibility of having secret proceedings. Just because, I, even though I am not accusing anybody of any specific wrongdoing whatsoever, I can imagine.
Possibilities.
The newspaper article about the secret communication between one of the petitioners and the zoning Board of Appeal that was never made public, never put into the record.
And you'd be disbarred because of it.
Well, you know, why would you even, I mean, my goodness, why would you even say such a thing?
Well, you know, it protects your.
What I'm always impressed with is that I bluff so well, that people think I'm barred, that's what always amazes me. But I just, I just think it would, it has the stet. But I just, I just think it would, it has the stink of impropriety. And I just think that if there is a communication from a third party, we should, again, put it into the record at the very least, if not discourage those sort of communications, if it's at all possible. And I'm not, again, accusing anybody of any wrongdoing or ill-intent or an intent to hide.
Right.
Not in the least. I'm just concerned that it appears that way. And it just seems that lately it's happened a few times, and I just think that it has that risk.
So two things, and you want, one, it be discouraged and.
Well, if they don't have the access to the information, to the emails, that.
Right, then it probably would, but if something were to slip through, then what you'd want is for that case, if it were live still, to have something written to the record.
I think that, to have the communication.
I think that's a good policy. And it's been rare, but it has happened twice in the last four months.
Could I suggest that we run it by Jay? What are your thoughts on that?
I mean, I.
I mean, I don't think he would have anything. No, I don't think he'd have anything wrong with it. He may, he may have additional whatevers, though.
Sure.
I don't know.
It might have violated the open meeting law if it was to continue, I would prefer not to even get an email.
Yeah.
I would rather have it in the mail to me. Because I don't even want, I get through a lot of effort to make sure that I keep myself clean, as far as the board as well. I don't want any backlash or anything.
So would you have a problem putting that in email and send it to Maria? She can send it to Jay for review?
Absolutely.
And then we'll just discuss it again?
Yeah, because I think it's just really appropriate that we do that.
Absolutely.
As soon as possible. But if we can, if we need to do anything else, then we'll do that, or write some sort of a disclaimer, put it on our web, on the website. I don't know.
We don't have to put it on the website.
Or even add to the applications that we have, you know, please contact individually with information about your case. Again, it's not accusing anybody of anything.
Just.
It has the appearance of the propriety.
The meeting law violation is the biggest problem.
So when I get emails, what you're asking from me is to just print them out and have them for the meeting?
No, no, there's no problem with you sending them to the board members. We just don't want any applicants sending direct emails, so if they don't have access to our email addresses.
They shouldn't have access to our email. I actually asked the last time.
I know.
And you have more, as an appointed member, you have more protection than if you were an elected member. Our emails are not public information. With that simple. So if it's going to become public information, take mine right off the list and send it to me in the mail.
Maria, I mean, I guess what it would mean would be for you, if something comes up from a proponent and you need to reply to them, and somebody says, you know, the zoning board should know, that's two emails, one to the proponent and one to the zoning board. Not one, don't combine them into one. It's not, it's not like we're wasting paper. It's just two emails. And I don't want, I don't want, I don't want copies of emails like that. Just, that's a waste of paper too. I mean, we should all be getting, you know, getting them. But it's just that combination of replying to the proponent or sending something to the ZBA and then letting the proponent know that you've done it, that's not, you just, you can't do that. Can't combine them. Enough said.
I know in the past, we've worked with boards and we've blind copied everybody so that if we get into that routine where the members are just blind copied, even on routine emails, here's the agenda. That way, it's another layer of protection that your emails won't get out.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
So it'll be blind copied. So we won't be seeing who else it went to either.
Correct.
Right.
And if you hit reply all, it's only going to go to the person who sent it to you.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, that's good.
Sounds good.
Good policy. Any other business?
I'm sorry, I thought you wanted us to sign something.
No, the only thing that had to be signed was the MOU. That's going to wait till next month.
So the next meeting is June 12?
That's correct. 7:00 PM.
Okay, I'll move that we adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Holland to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We need adjourned at 7:40 PM.